All supporters, the May 19th, 2021 Committee of the Whole, and Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Ms. Fulton, please lead us into play.
Thank you for joining us. Pleasantly, from the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, foundation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the board. Is this face where I can sit in? This face is not here for this meeting. She'll be here later. Ms. Fulton is present. Ms. Bowers is here. Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Rossky?
Here.
Mr. President Jones?
Here.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, everybody. As stated earlier, our monthly Committee of the Whole. And this evening, of course, you know, we stated that it's Committee of the Whole. Our public is invited to listen in, but there is no hearing of public comment. So Superintendent, I'm just going to turn the meeting over to you, and you can introduce your presentation. If you don't mind, I would like to change the order of who needs to go first in the whole. So I want to start off with success of time. I want to start off with that health and safety update. As was stated in our last meeting, we're not going to provide a formal presentation unless there are major changes, but we will provide for you the health data. And I don't think there are any major changes. There is one thing that I want to tell you, so I'm hoping this happens, is that yesterday, or the day before yesterday, I was on a call with the Health Commissioner of the county, and he anticipated Hamilton County going down to Orange. So that's good news, and so, yeah, wait for what that indicates. Everything is trending in the right direction. So that's the health updates, and we'll provide you another one on Monday. Okay, great. All right, so we want to start with concurrent learning first, because you know that this has an impact on the other bigger conversations that we're running back to back today. So today's conversation, a lot of it will be talking about the budget, but it's really about the board's priorities, and how we're able to fund or not fund those priorities, basically, on the whole of the time we're spending. But we're going to start with concurrent learning. Let me just do a little bit of a recap. If you recall, the last Committee of the Whole meeting, I believe, the last one, we talked about concurrent learning, and we talked about the price of concurrent learning, in addition to how the students who were in distance learning, how they perform academically, provide all that information. There seem to be some board members who are interested in not moving forward with the huge price tag associated with concurrent learning for the entire district. In the Student Achievement Committee, the committee discussed concurrent learning and asked us about the administration to look at a model of concurrent learning that doesn't have the huge price tag that was associated with the entire district. I want to share some of that. So tonight, our Chief Information Technology Officer, Jeremy, is going to provide to you a follow-up to the Committee of the Whole meeting for the entire board to be aware of.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So on the first page, I know the chart from the left is a little bit small. But that's actually just a recall to the chart provided in the budget. The draft budget, version one, we looked at the last meeting in the whole. I've summarized that on the left. What we talked about then was based, as Laura said, really around our questions over the past year during the pandemic about providing concurrent learning or streaming to all classrooms across the district. And that broke down to, as we recall, we talked about, the first part was $10 million in infrastructure costs. Those are the fixed costs that essentially allow us to build the capacity, not just for concurrent, but for going forward with the future of CPS and the new CPS strategies we define and that you define. The second part, which was the bigger part, was $40 million in classroom technology for modernizing our classrooms to be able to support concurrent across the district. Of course, that came with a large price tag of the $50 million total. Again, as Laura mentioned, after that presentation, next slide please. We looked at a lot of feedback, including the discussion here from the Committee of the Whole after that presentation, the discussion from the Student Achievement. ITM held a design feedback session, where we brought in a number of principals, teachers, and curriculum stakeholders to look at the various designs that we had presented to the board at the last meeting in the whole. We also discussed it with our parent IT advisory committee. And we also looked at a couple of considerations of different information that is becoming, that is coming in since that presentation, and the changes we're looking at, including the release of all the fiscal and budgetary state of the district, the survey results from our families when we were asking what the interest double was in concurrent learning for next year, as well as the changes and the improvements in the pandemic restrictions and vaccines that are going on, especially related to the vaccines being available to 12-year-olds and older now, and the prediction that in September, it will be available to 2 through 12-year-olds. So there is significant change that could have an impact on the number or the interest in concurrent learning. So with those considerations and factors, we have put together a budget draft version two. And I'm not saying it's necessarily a scaled-back option, but I like to think of it as a more practical option, as applying to those factors we discussed. First and foremost, the infrastructure costs, you can see those stay the same. Again, those are foundational that enable us to be able to support not just concurrent, but everything that we're looking to do going forward. So that $10 million stays consistent. The next area is the biggest change. So we're still looking at the virtual classroom design that was presented before. If you notice at the end of this presentation, the slides, that you'll have the diagrams that were attached last time. That design includes the interactive display, sound system, multiple microphones, and cameras, integrated into a single platform in the classroom that gives you a seamless engagement with students, not just with concurrent, again, but as a modern classroom for those same there, distance learning, or any other needs we would have. The number of classrooms we looked at is based on the combination of the interest, the concurrent interest, survey, feedback, and combining that with an analysis of grade band across our school. Because we have to consider that if you have 10 second graders and 10 third graders, single classroom wouldn't be able to serve both of those grades. So what we put together is a number of classrooms you see at the top, 575. That would be a maximum up to number that we could potentially need to outfit for next year. Those classrooms come in at approximately $14,000 per classroom, meaning the total budget for those would be $8 million across next school year. Unfortunately, there are some complications that just keep coming, and we've mentioned several of them. The first being delays that were already stacked up from the pandemic last year in being able to acquire technology. We've also mentioned there's a global microchip shortage that's causing some further backhauling on equipment orders. Now, the last one, you may have heard or may not, that there was also a port strike in L.A. So a lot of this equipment comes from the West. And so now we're seeing the impacts of that. Just today, I was talking with a couple of resellers who explained that now we may even start seeing impacts from the gas shortage pricing there that's going to affect the manufacturers' ability to get the equipment delivered. All of that combined into a perfect storm that really is going to cause us some problems with putting this plan in place on the timeline we would like. At the same breakdown, our resellers are predicting that we cannot start getting the displays, which are the key central component of this, until August at the earliest. So we're still working with resellers as quickly as we can, and if we can find any stocks on hand that we can get sooner, that that potentially delays us from being able to have any of the classrooms available for the start of school. Can't get this equipment. What we looked at was a stopgap measure to allow us to do some form of the remote current start with while we get the equipment in hand to be able to do the classroom design. What we're talking about is a standalone concurrent learning device, very similar to what we're piloting at Walden. We're not looking at that specific device, but that type of device. Small, mobile, something that has a built-in microphone, cameras, and speaker that can be used temporarily on a small scale in all the classrooms that we needed on demand, so based on the number of students from each grade that would need to be requesting concurrent learning. And so that would allow us to bridge the gap until we can get the equipment and get the classrooms set up. Altogether, you're looking at a total budget for this plan of $18.75 million. And just for a little different perspective that can help, we looked at it from a, looking at that total, every school has some variables. A good example is Hughes. Their walls are made out of materials that you can't drill through, right? So you have to do conduit all across the walls. So it's a little bit different cost than a school that has passive vehicles, just based on the variables of our building. So it's not a one-to-one match. But this breaks down a good average estimated cost on buildings based on the type of school it is, the grade band that's comprised of. So if you look here, you can see preschool through sixth grade, the approximate cost to do their classrooms, the numbers we expect to need based on our surveys and the grade band, would be about $108,500. Preschool through eight, $155,000. Seven through 12, $186,000. Nine through 12, obviously back down to $124,000. And the preschool through 12, being the entire school across all grade bands, could be approximately $263,000. Hopefully, that gives a little bit better breakdown on the per-school kind of basis as to what this looks like as a cost. And like I said, behind that, you'll see the diagrams that break down more of what those solutions look like in the actual classroom. So if there are any questions about those, we can look down. Otherwise, any question?
Question?
Go ahead, Jim.
Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks for the presentation. It was very helpful. And I think at the outset, I think the idea of looking at a more targeted idea versus the whole original dollar figure, I just personally find very helpful. Can you, we may have seen this already, Ben, I said, I'm not sure. You mentioned this survey of families that need to move here next year. Do you have some numbers on what that looks like, like how many kids or?
So we use some of the aggregate data for basis of this, but I would really be hesitant to speak in any details. I believe Krista could join us, and maybe she could give us a little bit of info.
So for elementary schools, the average of families who wanted not in-person learning to distance learning was 7%. Title I schools were about 9%, other schools were about 4%. And high school was in the 80s. So kind of underpinned.
These are exactly the numbers I was looking at. Yes, thank you. Can you talk a little about the response rate, and just what makes you confident or how these are good to rely on?
They were very similar to our class.
Which is in the 20s?
Yeah, so low 20s for Title I schools, at closer to 30% for our one.
Thank you. Professor, all of our Mr. Marashi.
Thank you. And the timing of that, would that have been back when we did the first?
So it was more recent than that. It was, it ended, I think, April 30th, I think. Yeah, so it was April 30th for elementary, April 16th for high school.
Yeah, I think this one thing that's changing at lightning speed, and hearing this, as Orange comes, and we just heard that our business, today, we're back to business as you pre-pandemic July 1st. Everybody's like, oh, we weren't ready for that. So I think it'd be interesting to see if that evolves, you know, with some of these other milestones. Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Paul, I think I missed you, missed you by candle.
Yep, come on.
Because relative to that point, with this plan and the total, again, as I said, that was actually maximum amount of base on the information and data we had. But as we do more surveying and optioning forms for our families to find out what the exact numbers are, and we're closer, it is possible with the way we can roll it out to be able to scale it down in real time as we get more confirmed of it.
Okay, go ahead. So was that they wanted this option because of COVID, or they wanted a virtual option?
COVID. So was the five-day-a-week option for if a concurrent learned?
Just wondering how that is mirrored up to the typical audience that would say, hey, I want the Virtual Academy. And I heard a lot of people say, well, actually, kind of, I don't know, even after COVID, if I send my kids back, we kind of got into it. It's not our house, but some people said that, yeah.
It's interesting that you bring up Virtual Academy. So they were split more closer to 60-40, where 60% of their, of that group preferred to stay, and 40% of those who went.
Mr. Marashi.
My comments, or at least part of my comments, are similar to Mr. Messer, but looking more at August. Like, so August is the earliest likely receiving any of this stuff. The odds of even that many people wanting this option are probably a lot lower. So if you're, Jeremy, that whole, you know, idea of a real-time lesson probably makes sense. And then also the other question I already asked, that one was asked, if it had been more interesting. The other thing I would add is just my own sort of personal, talking with board member Bolton for the committee. My own personal passion for concurrent is pretty much mine. And I'm glad to see the $50 million down to $18 million. I do still think that the investing in tech and having the ability for more kids to go beyond. Because some, again, maybe it wasn't everybody, but there were some students, families that pride on it and want some more of it, but towards the full line of concurrent. A lot of that, too, is based on the fact that I don't think I've heard it's near impossible. So I would just, yeah, however we can reach people in the summertime to gauge, they can just be like, places lifting, asking, I don't know how to feel about any of this stuff yet, but it's like, this seems to be like, okay, now it's gone, which is not. And so I think we're trying to be careful with that. So, yeah, just a personal comment, my passion for concurrent. And then two, I bet it all.
Fulton, yeah, thank you. I'm still intrigued about having the capacity to do it. Still intrigued by that, because I do think part of that is where a lot of people believe that, or you're more weak of the. I'm not intrigued anymore about classroom by classroom, largely due to, I think, it's a staffing factor there, and then enrollment factor there. It's much as a technology piece. But I do like, and we talked about it briefly, in achievement, where it would be great to have some kind of capacity like that, building by building, not only for instruction or special opportunities or what have you, but even an LSD and C meeting. And this could be part of the way you actually move towards greater engagement, as much as it would be helping instruction. So I'm looking at very much like, I'm with you, I don't want to use the word scaled down, but a different avenue or opportunity, building by building, for other things than instruction, but including instruction. But each school might want to share, whether it's a band concert or whatever, and have some interactive effort. I do question though, remember when we first started, before it was concurrent, that we got to, we got pretty excited about, and it was so many people wanted to be at home, not their house, but their home school, they still wanted to be remote. There was some talk early on about not an interactive capacity, but at least a, what would that be, a broadcast capacity.
I think it's what we would call a live stream.
Yeah, okay. And that costs money, because we didn't have all the, there's also the privacy issue, but to me, that starts to be something where we're not remote, we don't want necessarily interaction, but then we want to see their teacher or in their building, teaching the course or the class, or the kid's absent, or it's a snow day, or you know what, a snow day doesn't count on that one. But that is still of interest to me, because if that's cheaper than this, but that's where we're at on where we need to be going based upon what you all think.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thanks, Jeremy. Look, the update, and even though 20% of this will disurge in the course, reset from our parents, that's what we have, and that's what we'll have to go by. I do agree with what Mr. Marashi and Wayne away from. I'm still in a scary with order of voting, though, but at a different point, because I'm thinking if we're still doing quarantine for students who have to be out at certain times, I'm thinking about just looking in this as opposed to just going to school, you know, just three minutes of class. A lot of time in the community is missing the interactive. So I was opposed, that's why I thought more so focused on the interactive. If we can have some concept of that. I also agree about the engagement, and I think that we can increase the likelihood. Yeah, regardless of any of that, if we have the option, if school or parent didn't give the insurance, or their company, parents knew we, or they would like to engage with the school, that would be a good option to have this type of virtual or concurrent option in the school building. So I was agree, and I'm not so focused on the per-school, per-classroom, but like to feel the option in the building, or specifically that the option shouldn't have to be out or because of contact. With that, I think we're going with it.
Okay, Susan. So just a couple of quick thoughts and comments. The price tag that Jeremy provided today is only the technology. But keep in mind, there's all the professional developers that have to go into getting the teachers up to the capacity to actually be able to do this, so that's just the technology component of this. That's the first thing that I wanted to make you aware of. The second thing is, I'm going to ask Susan to come forward to talk very quickly about the fact that we will be given vaccines in our high schools next week. And so, I mean, these are like major game changers in kids coming back.
So we are really excited to say that we are administering vaccinations at all high school sites Monday and Tuesday next week with three different partners, TriHealth Children's, and the Simpson and Walsh Department are all working in collaboration across our different high school sites. Very excited about that. We're also in partnership with the Governor's Office to explore what surveillance testing looks like. We're on Week Two of Surveillance Testing at Meet Academy, and are planning to expand that across several sites during summer scholars, with possible implementation across our district in August. So what that means is that learners with parents' consent or guardian's consent would take a quick swab and then be able to be identified if they're positive on. So those pieces are the work.
But I think having that piece of information helps the board. I believe as well that you're going to see the numbers dramatically. This is totally anecdotal. I was in four schools today, and so the first thing I asked the principal as I'm walking around Harvard, and in three out of the four, they were between 99% and 95% of the kids were back. Even the kids who said they wanted to be distant after a week, of the kids being back in five days, they started to come. So people are really just sending their kids to school because that's where they believe is the best place to come. So I don't think that a huge investment will be as needed as you mentioned or as you did.
I'm going to weigh in now. I came into the meeting thinking that it was kind of pretty much decided for myself that I'm looking at the concurrent piece as part of our sort of future plan for a new CPS, that it is an option that we've never had before. And although the idea came about through the pandemic, that there may be in the future some need for it. However, I do believe that people want to come back to school. So I agree with Mr. Marashi about waning about it. But my question is, and I probably could be swayed one way or the other, either let's not do concurrent, or let's do a part of it. If you have, if you decided to do something with concurrent, I would support doing it, building, you know, like access in the building for all the reasons that have been stated here, recognizing that there is additional cost to it. But I think there are a lot of value to that. So the minimal cost, the cost to me is not as much of a factor as it is the value, you know, moving forward for doing all these other things. And, you know, when I think about it, you know, we thought about it in COVID. I think about it like, what if a room breaks out with measles or something? measles are pretty much eradicated, but, you know, if we have access to it. So that's kind of where I am. I do see a lot of value in having access to it. I've been worried, though, and hope me with this, so I can understand some. In concurrent learning, because we keep using concurrent and virtual interchangeably, is there a difference? So in concurrent learning, there's actual viability for the kids to be able to, who are at home, interact with it.
That's right. That's what I thought.
As opposed to having this device that can paddle that allows the kids to see what's happening in the classroom, but there's no energy. And I do like that concept. I, for me personally, I like the kids having that interaction with the teachers and students. So that's kind of where I am, whether I think the cost is worth the investment on a smaller scale, not in every classroom, but more building-based and having access to it for different reasons. I saw Mr. Lindy first, and then Pam, and then Mike.
Yeah, I think I may see this differently on the, on both of the dollars. I'm happy to be down shy with the numbers from Krista on the response rate. I was trying to do the math on like, what would this investment mean per student user? And so like, if we have 7% of our 35,000 students in district wanting to use this, and it's $18 million, it was coming out, you know, just by my backbeat, I love that to be about $7,000 per student, which to me seems huge. I don't know if anybody else, I'm just not calibrated to the people, but we can buy everybody the greatest power without, and I'm not saying we should be there, but just that with the things that Mr. Marashi was saying about the expected waning interest. And the cost per user, I think from my perspective, I think we could do something more transformational with this, which is what I do. And happy to chat on that.
Could I respond just a little? I just have a question. So what do you see, what do you see as options? You said, you see different options for kids. What, there are, there is a small percentage of families that probably won't send their kids back. At, you know, so what, how do you see those kids learn if they're not coming back?
I think it would be those families who choose a digital app. And I think the number of students fall into that category recently. I could be wrong. If people really disagree, only one person.
I was just curious to see what you're thinking, what was wrong. Okay, and I am a fantasy DA, in the sense that if we have some improvements, I think you're right.
This is quite, that's a good point. That's possible, probably, but it's not interactive. And I think that's what I'm hearing, actually, really, not here, to the level of that. Who joined us after that? But Jeremy, the question I have for you is, is there any way that a holder of golden presence, myself, to have this infrastructure in the school, maybe not have it for teachers in the classroom, for an option to do for like extracurricular things or after some thing, or PTA, but not have it like, as I mentioned, she said, she presented, said, this was the equipment without her teachers. Right, the non, you know, the call. But do we have the ability to have this in the school where you sit, where it's not, or kind of part of large facilities, but just to have this opportunity in the school?
We do, and that's one thing I would say, from looking at the overall package we're looking at. looking at, the first part, that's why I kept referring to that 10 million as the fixed cost, that part I would almost separate from concurrent as just being, that is the preparation, the capacity and everything we're looking to go forward with district wide, the system level that we've talked about. The classroom piece is the part that really leads to concurrent. Um, I, I do think there's some value in modernizing our classrooms in general, but we can, it, it is directly scalable to essentially any number of 101 that we just wasn't in a classroom. So with that 14,000 per room, we've looked at a classroom as that could be, you know, recreational room or any other room in a building if we wanted to, this record scalable from one room to as many as we want.
So I'd like to offer, I mean, I don't know, I don't have an answer to what would this play or other thing for right now. But I, I think I would tend, um, to agree with Ben as much as I have been for the opposite side, I think, for a few months at least, if not more. Um, again, only because I think, for example, $7,000 to you is right, that, that is a thought. While I do still believe that people will not want to return official classroom, I have to be for, again, personally, I, I don't want to do my job the same way on this attitude before, I mean, 10 times correct, it works better. This type of schooling probably would have worked better for me too if my children didn't exist, either I did or did last time. So, um, but I, I, so I do think, you know, maybe find a way to use those dollars to make that experience more interactive, um, is good. So I wanted to lend some support for that. But then lastly, the, my, not just anecdotally practitioners, not just in our district, but in other places regarding concurrent, learning concurrent instruction to pretend this point is takes training, um, and then just sort of research, scholarly, whatever, it's not great. And I, and, and so that's really, when I started today, I say, starting to think, most of it was treated in half, um, sort of research and discussion. It, it doesn't really work well, um, for either group. And at the end of the day, and, you know, I was, I'm really pushed for this, so I, you know. Um, I always try to, students appear a bit, uh, so I, I, I'm big enough to admit it. It doesn't, it takes away from both learners' experience. I've never taught in that direction. I don't know, nor did I ever learn in it, but it makes sense that if you have a group in front of you, a group on screen, you cannot give both equitable or even equal attention in one group. You're going to get the short end of sometimes different. So for that reason too, I think if we need to, look at the cost, you know, one last thing, what Pam's been sort of dancing around that I really like about community, our, our school buildings aren't able to have meetings that the public can watch and similar to what they're doing here with us. That's a different kind of community setting, whether it's a PTO, uh, PTA, or L S E and C. I think that's pretty neat if there was an delay, uh, like after the, uh, classroom or, uh, anyhow, I just wanted to.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I, I think the breakthrough would be the engagement piece and the sharing piece, meaning, you know, we need to have people see what we are doing. They need to see our children perform. We shouldn't have to, you know, go to L S E open day and, and be, get to see our kids. And so I think it goes both ways. And I think that could be the breakthrough. And I've been here 13 years or so, and engagement has always been a problem for us. And one of the very few things people haven't actually enjoyed about over, sounds weird, uh, is at least the new way to do this business, to my point. The only thing I'd emphasize is building the building and the game of caring for special events or, or, or meetings or, or particular courses, I guess. Like Chase, uh, next week is having a very famous, a person come in who's written a book about voting, so the children will know all about voting and what happens if that's a type of special event, that, you know, if it's in the right room, it could work. The only thing I'd add would be, um, um, I'm with Mike about this would be a hard thing to do, but concurrent, but, and I think it is an enormous problem. I think it is a staffing issue, but maybe to do a little bit more concentration based upon what, what Pam said, maybe think, maybe concentrate a lot of effort on C D A, having that capacity of interaction versus everywhere. So I mean, this is, this is a number of options. But I have to say, I know I've played this way, administrations have to sail shore to shore a thousand times as we've been trying to find how to mitigate the situation that we tend to, and I, I really appreciate all of, I know that we're just, this work has been come on, um, this topic, um, other topics, the health, safety, curriculum, instruction. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed. Regardless of whatever is decided, we couldn't make decisions without all those freedom today.
Yeah, so, um, uh, so we have come full circle. We are right back where we were in August when we proposed that we did not believe learning was going to work. We're calling it, and so I'm glad though that we are at this place and I just, I hope, my hope, my hope and dream is that in August, that we'll be at this place, we'll move forward and stay here to actually move forward on A I, an idea. Um, I will say that I still love the belief, and I just like making up stuff off the top of my head, but that we do offer two options. The C D A may not be the option that people want, but it is an option and there's a lot of work that has happened and work will continue to happen to beef up that, um, program, um, or should say that school. So we'll continue to work very hard on that. To close out this conversation though, I want to make sure that I know what we're doing.
Me too.
Okay.
Because I was hearing so much sort of diversity of thought and I'm not quite sure if I'm hearing a theme or.
Oh, I'm sorry. Because I think maybe I could, uh, you know, I talked to the parent and I found that they had student virtual academy and I asked them why? And they said, safety. And I said, oh, well, tell me why. And it was all, all based on kind of their fear of school shootings and that type of thing. I said, what would make you feel comfortable? And he like read off the thing of what we have to do to equip a building, up to a duty, a building, both your glass a little bit. And I thought, I don't think we'd be able to meet that expectation. So, okay, then virtual, try by the way to go. To me, this is another group of parents who are gonna say, I have these requirements. So I, and I, so I think we, we're always gonna have another reason or something. And so I, I go to, I just will put an exclamation point in, A, 18 million, sometimes doesn't seem like a lot when you think about our total budget, but then we think about the cost of affecting the new school, or at least giving us down to half of that. Um, expanding, you know, a new site into Madisonville for preschool or whatever. Um, so a challenge session would be helpful for me to think about kind of, if we were to do this, what else could we do with it? But I really think the theme of, uh, taking some of that and really saying, what else could we do with virtual academy? Now that we're through the pandemic and really build on this idea of naming it, uh, and then maybe getting a parent working group together to help support like the reimagining of it and totally go to another level for this and any other reason why parents may ask for a number of options. Okay.
So, yeah, I think I have a doubt to be correcting it from the wrong two paragraphs. So we're going to continue to do some work at C D A, but see how close we may be able to come to some future interactions with students or C P A. We would like very much to move forward with the technology refresh that was already part of the plan before the pandemic, which is about a $10 million investment.
For the foundation, we have $10 million and we would have to price up the years of classroom refresh that was tied into that, it would have to come back out, uh, but it would probably be between one to two million.
Um, we want to be able to move forward to appoint a many board members on an engagement, um, at the center, at each school, that would allow people to tune in like into community meetings and spaces like, like we're doing now. And then the last thing is, um, on an as needed basis, we would provide the technology to allow kids to at least look into the classrooms, but not every single classroom. So does that capture what you wish to move forward? All the four things, C D A, technology infrastructure, at the center for engagement, and then by classroom. And honestly, just, just a thought is that even the back classroom, we consider looking at how many kids are we talking about to make that type of an investment? And if you can follow all the kids in the same third grade classroom, does that work? But if you're talking about, let's not try to put a price tag on each kid, but do you want to make all of that investment for two, two students as opposed to, so I think that there should be some type of a formula that would be the lever to say, okay, we'll outfit this classroom with.
Any questions about those four? She kind of summarized four major areas for people. Would it be that?
Yeah, I think what's, what's implied there is that this, the precise number is not important, but this is on the order of nine or 10, uh, 18, 19. They're all listed, or maybe 11. But it's, it's, it's about half as. Thank you.
Okay.
Give it a whirl.
Any other?
I got you, Jeremy.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So the four points, the four summary points, everybody, I was kind of getting shaken, but I just.
That's it, everybody's.
Yeah. Okay. We know what we're gonna do, we're ready to go now. Thank you, Jeremy. Good timing too, it's actually four to the clock.
That's saving the time. Okay, so our treasurer is gonna start this conversation. This is about those two two priorities as it relates to the money.
Good evening, revenue. Pleasure to be here, talk about spending money. And just so you know, the PowerPoint that I had, I changed it, it was from a phone call that Jeremy, before I came down here. So this is a living, breathing document that changes almost hourly. So, um, and Laura is gonna join me as we continue to partner, as we talk about these. Um, but here's kind of the big picture, uh, challenge that I'd like you and the public to understand, our revenue streams, um, are growing, but they're not keeping expectations or expenditure streaming because of, um, the enrollment growth and strategic initiatives. That's what I'm hoping to pose. Plus of those two things together is starting to ruin our cash balance. Young and old members of the group. So here's a picture of the last forecast that we presented to you. See that we are in the year, this is year 21 right there. Two bars represent. You don't have the option to say, let's do a stock split, bring more money. Let's do a fire sale on diapers and generate more revenue. You don't, you don't have the option to just, revenues is what we want to do. You have to fund things within the funding, funding stream. Red line indicates expenditure growth and it's not nearly as steep as it used to be. We've done a good job forecasting and managing our, our spends moving forward. The yellow line represents the cash balance and the erosion that goes forward. T is the three-year window and forecast, so if it requires us to have a positive cash balance in that third year, we're gonna close that. We don't want that to happen. So it's very important that as we schedule our spend over the next three cycles, we preserve that cash balance in the third year. Makes sense?
Just the third year, 24, 25?
Well, it's, right now it's 23, but as we move into the next year, we'll be 24. So, and we'll be, on Monday night, we'll be giving you a new forecast for what it, so some of this data will be changed. So, um, also, um, this public comment or conversation that I'm having with families at, we don't have this massive, massive amount of money that we can spend on anything we don't spend on. There are restrictions that come with our funding sources. So the district has three major funding sources, our local funds, the general funds, that come from property taxes and state foundation formula, which by the way, the local fund, we have a budget, we have a lot of that. Okay, then we have, um, about $20 million of state grants and $88 million in federal grants. You can see that detail through finance committee minutes because we give, obviously. But we have about $100 million in state and federal grants that are very restricted on what they're used for. Inside general funds, we also have restrictions. So property taxes don't have restrictions, we can pick, we can use that money as we need. The state foundation formula funds, paid to 12 education plus preschool disabilities. And then within that formula, there's restrictions on economically disadvantaged students and pre-tech. Because we spend more money than the state gives us, all this thing, we have an issue on me. Thanks, but we can't just kind of move money around as we desire without breaking some rules. Um, property tax reimbursement comes from the state. If you recall, those are reimbursement, residential credit, property tax credits, and the, um, phase out of the handle personal property tax, which you might understand is the old business tax. And then our payment, we get about $24 million a year on, already as a tip payments, and that's increasing because of all the. Then we have, uh, other sources, which is our e-rate, medicated reimbursement, tuition that we collect on the belt, people that, um, have us around the state, generate 621 million dollar revenue. So, how do I calculate a budget target? It's based on forecast data, but we start with the forecasted balance of what we think we're gonna end the year with in tax, and that's based on the November forecast. So in the November forecast, we anticipated the end of this year, we could be, we would stop with $70 million in unincumbered cash in the state. Then we estimated 621 million dollars in revenues based on all those sources I just gave you. Give us the total available resources for the general funds that kind of, like, right? So what we want to spend our money. But to me, that three-year window of cash reserve, I need to set about $41 million aside at the end of this year, this year with $41 million, end of next year, I'm sorry. Um, so that says, okay, you can only spend $650 million, we need all those things. Questions about that? This thing is so sensitive, they're telling me to pick it up, it moves up here. Okay, so.
So Jen, yes, uh, back there, there's 88 million regarding that.
Yeah.
That does, that's not care, right? Or is that?
Some of it is. It, uh, the, yes, there's cares in states and there's care in, in student wellness in states.
So as everyone understands, if there's cares that is embedded.
Yes.
Not over here for another 200, or some of it is?
The state of federal mines I gave you are the ones we have now, doesn't include the, yeah, because we don't have it in allocation, but we haven't started that year yet. We're getting ready to start it in like, within the next couple of weeks. And then the 204 million dollars is still up and.
Right.
Waiting to be allocated.
So that, that on that slide, it's concurrent cares, it's not the.
$20 million in care, yes. Okay, so, um, remember that $650 million target, and thank you, Mr. Messer, for always helping us remember our fixed costs, but right off the top, 20% of that $650 gets set aside on fixed costs for things that we don't control. So our debt, we transfer $16 million each year into the debt fund so we can pay the debt service on, um, the beautiful buildings that we have. I have a line in there for new COGS issue because if we ever decide on the facilities that needs to be renovated, if we're gonna do another COGS, this is, it would come out of the general fund, the annual payment out of the general fund, plus we were able to take it out of the cares for American Rescue Act, American Jobs Act, either one of those.
These fixed costs come out of the, the 650?
Out of the 650, right. So, um, we transferred $3.2 million into the fund, the building maintenance fund, every year that's required by the Ohio Department of Education, 1.7 million dollars on property casualty insurance, um, district fees, that, that represents, um, Dusty Rhodes fees for collecting our property taxes and giving them to us, and state auditor fees. We always set aside about $2 million in contingency because there's always things that pop up from the E or, uh, class size and new and old. Try to do that. And then there's a budget item called contract obligation. So these are things that are in the collective bargaining agreement that are, that forces to put money aside to spend. And these things are like the teacher siphons. Sick leave conversion for when people retire, we have to pay off their sick leave balances, the sick leave pools, and professional development that's required to be collected by the person. All of that adds up to about $14 million. And then we have our tuition, which is only the state foundation deducted tuition. We spent about $115 million in tuition. This just represents Carter School, Ed Choice vouchers, autism, Peterson, and open enrollment. So the state just takes the money now. And in the department, some of the other departments, they actually direct take tuition because placement. So that 129 million is 20%, and that leaves us with 529 million to do all this great strategic stuff and classroom construction. Okay, we're going to get it. So here's a transition slide to turn it over to the superintendent to talk about some. Teachers and utilities that we want to invest in.
Now, this should be a picture that everyone is familiar with. This is the change management model and the board work, which I believe in January could identify what's on the old shore that's going to stay on the old shore? What are some new things from the old shore that are going to transition over to the new shore? And then what are the new things that are going to be happening that we haven't been doing? And so that is the EPS research. So as we've been doing our work over the last several months, do the information. That session, and then you can see there are a whole list of other groups that we've been able to get information from since last, the beginning of the school year, actually started back in June of last year. So speak up, speak out, the town halls, the parent town halls, the student town halls, the staff town halls, principal cabinet, teacher cabinet, so a lot of different towns. People listen to survey them. And what we have to present to you is the information we've already seen. It's now attached with the dollar figures. And so I think it's really important to note that we totally did not do. We did not start with an allocation and say, okay, this is how much money we have to spend. So let's figure out what we can do with that money. Started off with strategic priorities first and what your board asks for. And then we say, how much do we think that's going to cost? And then we have to be able to make some decisions as to which ones we will actually move forward with. So hopefully you can see, board members, you can see yourself on this slide. Principal Development, they're lending, it is there, it is the first line to pursue investment. Development. What you can't see is all the detail behind the, when you look at the African-American studies, we'll be adding additional teachers that, the expanding world language, that will be additional teachers. That, the first grade reading, we're talking about reading specialists at our schools to build a world with first grade. Instrumental music, so I'm just pointing out that you can't keep the detail behind it. The additional staff that will be needed in terms of teachers to make this happen. And you see the advanced placement offering as it relates to the teachers that are needed. We have been working very diligently and hard to make sure that we're grounding this work in faculty and also making sure that we're paying attention to the anti-risk policies for this development. So we did not start with the money first, we started with the plan, the initial priorities. And you can see night school is on here, outdoor learning is on here. So hopefully you can see what you've said come through to the planning. All right, this got slide captured, so the slide I showed you, that was really. Health and safety. So you can see all the things that are here. Growth, 30.8 million, that includes additional teachers to make the growth happen. You'll see our English learner engagement and SCL support and the Meridian plan, employee engagement. So you'll see, hopefully, the things that you've called out as important to you, allows a strategic plan to be refreshed for the upcoming school year. All right, the next plan, okay, there's one like, are you like, thank you? It's just like passing by itself. Wow, that's great. All right, the strategic plan, expanding. Of growth, you see how many. Satellite program, the Promise Center, which we're required to have, and that is what we're calling our A E A to S, is the Promise Center. You'll see that we're starting to restore some of the things that went away as a result of COVID, and some of them need to come back because we have all of our kids who are coming back. So just let me just stand this point for just a moment. You will recall that we put a pause button on A E A to S because kids were either in distance learning or blended, there wasn't that need for it. Now that we have our kids coming back, the team wants to do an entire refresh on that program, but it is something that we not only need to have, but we are required to have by law. So see the social workers, as we think about student wellness and the SCL needs that our kids have to increase those social workers, the counselors, the seven bells, getting back to all of our high schools having seven bells, we see the number of teachers that we're adding. The DSL, the SCL, you can see all of the staff that's required to not only restore some of the work, but also to be able to move forward in a new and different direction. Next slide. So here's a summary of what captured on the three previous slides in terms of teachers, support, third person personnel, paraprofessionals, as well as health and safety, and our school-based support. And I'm going to read that with my.
Thank you, thank you. So that is the last slide that, can you go back to the second slide? No, you're fine. The teacher line doesn't necessarily include the teachers that are in some of the strategic initiatives that have that level of scale. We will continue to update this as we refine the scale of what we can afford to do moving forward. So just keep, keep in mind that this is not what we're instant. Also, I forgot to put on the super subs. We have 109 super sub teachers that will be along that teacher line, and we're going to add 52 more for next year because of teacher resume rate help. And that's, that totals 91 and a half more teachers than we have, well, 109. It's a significant investment in instruction, supporting instruction.
201.
201.5, would include 161 super subs. 109 with us this year, that are budgeted this year. Right, Paul? Fifty-two. I forgot to add that, I realized that when I was walking down here. Apologies, we'll get that updated for the next resume.
Yeah, I'll say that would be awesome, that.
Yep, of course. So I know this is a tiny little print. All I'm trying to show you here is that for each of the strategic categories, we're trying really hard to. All the. Some things got put in the general fund and they really belong to the cares. For the things that are putting in cares. So the guidelines for the federal guidance for cares money is much more nebulous than Ohio is allowing us to be. They're challenging that something I think are. One example is last year, we invested, I think it was 1.4 million. And they told me the note, it's, that's maintenance, the regular maintenance. And I said, we wouldn't be investing in the new ventilation if we didn't have. They don't fight it through, but some of our ideas, they don't necessarily believe it. We have, and I'm convincing them. So it's not as easy as we think. But based on the information that is in place right now, about 5.3, 5.5 million dollars is going to hit the general fund if we can't continue to take advantage of some of our funding source. Okay, so thank you to our chief strategy officer who helped create this decision tool that we've gone through. Trying really hard to make decisions based on the academic impact, return on investment for our spend. So we went through this room break, there's four areas that. Is it strategically aligned? Is it operationally aligned? Is, what's the feasibility of doing it? And how does it impact student learning? So everything got scored, and then it got ranked, and then we talked about. Going through one of the major investments and. And we continue to work through those results. Pandemic funding, they get a lot of questions about pandemic funding. So we finished out the first four grants. Cares one, the $20 million, we almost completely spent out. We started using the tail end of that grant. Kickstarts some of the summer dollars ordering. So now we're starting to plan how and spend the cares of the $93 million here. We have to spend cares one, or have it encumbered before we can start using the first dollar of cares two. Very elegant, tiny. And also, if we spend too quickly, it can become a cash flow issue for me because I have to spend the money first and then ask for reimbursement. They don't count our inputs. So if we do a major purchase. Take a lot of it first. But we want to be careful about the timing. Okay? Here is this, this slide has a three o'clock except for him. So of next year's allocation, I've got 93 million and money that's available for. 33 million is intended to go towards summer. First grade reading special, she saw that as a strategic initiative, that's 45 reading, additional reading special. Right out of the care. Unit recruitment engagement, there's several projects in there. The nursing contract expansion, we went from 2.4 a couple years ago to 7. So we could put that, yeah, increase, I think, cares. Safety supplies, student surveillance testing, we start to, will that might not stay at the same amount because of virus shots? Think of that word. Wow, really? Okay, so more ventilation improvements and $100,000 for facilities and infrastructure. General, want to go sweeping. And then technology, of course, that 61 million has changed twice today, and so we'll update that going forward. You can see we were pretty good at spending money that's available. And but we saw it's a room to go, and we're still waiting for directions on the American, American Jobs Act to see how much, I know there's infrastructure much in there, but how much is going to be twelve versus the rest of them?
Questions? Yeah. The students are very, and I heard that. But I can hear what they said, it's true. Is that, did they have a pilot in the lead thing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so here is the question, and I won't use the word my team doesn't want me to use, but. This, this is a picture, I'm trying to get people to understand that this $300 million that we're getting care money. So any, anything we mush out of what our current stuff is into that little yellow. Section. We have to make some decisions about what happens when that money goes away. And so here's, if you put to the next one, here's a, our fifth example of what I'm talking about. So fiscal year 19, we had nursing services with the city Cincinnati 1.4. It grew to 2.4 in 20, and we shifted all that money out of the general fund to the student wellness fund because governor actually created a whole separate student wellness, even though. Created a whole separate fund number. We shipped the nursing contract in there for 2.4. And then last year, we increased it to 6 million, next year it's going to be 7.4. I'm using student wellness, the 2.4, and then the difference in the cares act. So in 24, when the cares act money goes away, are we as a district going to scale back to the original? And if we decide to keep on, that extra five to six million dollars is going to have to come out of something else we're spending money on in the general fund. Make sense? Okay, good. I'll get an eight for today. Okay, so this slide, so here's what I'm trying to show, the same concept, really. ended fiscal year 20 for $621 million spend. And we ended the year with $79 million of unencumbered cash. So for this year, we have a budget of 647 million, and we're anticipating that we're going to end with 70 million. Already see we've dipped into cash by now. So next year, with our budget target at 650. That will leave us at $38 million a year in cash. We're dipping deeper into our cash balance. So if there's only, this only allows a $3 million growth that's spent from 647 to 650, keeping that third year in the positive cash flow. But these strategic initiatives and restored services are costing money. So anything that goes beyond that $3 million growth is going to have to come out of something that we're spending money on. We have not included anything for negotiated policy. So we can't, if we, if we continue to add on and add on and add on, we wipe out the cash balance. Okay, so where does that leave us today? So in 27 years of history, the ask has never come in smaller than. Those have a work to do to close the gap, which is perfectly normal. We're able to do that every year, we make some tough decisions about whether we want to invest our money. But we started with a pretty large gap, and so we're digging into those details. Go ahead and put the next slide. So, so we could go right with me, and this team has done a phenomenal job of. Budgets line by line. And we just begin. Now I think we have a gap of $45 million, so we have some work to do. And that's where we're spending feedback from the board, and you will go through your. So our next steps, we just finished, they just finished the school reviews and were able to identify some areas of the casting that may have been needed, or was it duplicated in the budget or was it a mistake? And so they corrected those. Now we're going to go to a deeper dive on the central. With the concept of, are we going to invest in it? Are we going to adjust it, or scale it back, or delay it a year or two? Or are we just going to abandon it because of what? So we have five weeks to finish this. Looking forward to the timeline on the next slide. You? The big yellow star indicates this is where we are today, so you've all had, had meeting meetings and talked about. How are these? Tomorrow's finance committee, so we'll have a deep ref on today's conversation. The 24th on Monday, we're sharing with you the fighter's forecast. This forecast has to be adopted Monday night. I don't, I don't typically like presenting and ask for approvals. But have to file it with O D by end of. Next board presentation on the budget will be June 7th and June 16th. Looking forward to you. We have one more finance committee before you can board us to vote on. If, if you recall, you have a budget. I have to file that somewhere in the company before I can cut the first vendor or paycheck of the year. So it's important for us to continue to work towards balancing this budget and protect our money. While we invest in things that are super academic results. So with that, I'll pause and, any more questions you have?
We're wondering, how much thinking, considering, like you said, everything's changing? Not only is he guys worked through it, but in the, the whole issue of COVID. How, what parts of this budget, and I don't want to know specifically yet, have that influence? Like thinking that we would be continuing down the COVID line? I mean, you know, we've been thinking, you know, is it represent 10 or 15%? Or are we going to just kiss it off and say, the world is going to be gone? I mean, I'm just.
No, I can't tell you what the percent is, but I do know, like, some of the things I said. It's, it's super subs. Returning to transcript. But, you know, if we have to go remove for a time period, I want to talk to that. Increase in the number of services, and so we're trying to think through what it will be like. Certainly face this time.
Right.
So I can't tell you what percent it is. I do know that we left staff in there that we put in this year, help with social distancing. I think the entire spread, I think there was 56 extra parents we left in the home. Us monitors, none of those kinds of. It's unwise of us not to do that, but we may be able to fade it down as time changes.
Yeah, and then we'll leave, and I don't know that we need itemized list, but categories or whatever, because you said it's down now is forty five from the eighty million. Would we be able to find out a sense of where you were able to make those cuts, or if the, if the number of people have already given up?
Sure, you can do that.
I mean, not
They're only going to do that in the whole weeks today, but yes.
No, uh-uh, I don't, no, I'm just saying, that might actually be a long way.
Go back to the other question. So, um, so in concert with, um, the health department, both the county and the city, you're not getting no recommendations all of a sudden stop doing the procedures that we know have kept our kids and our staff who have received. So I would imagine that there's still some level of cleaning products that we keep in place, and we all have decided on the mask wearing, but it's just like rip the band-aid off and open it up without these procedures, I think, will be um, law, and so I would imagine some of these things would probably stay around for a while. Um, I think that it gives the staff and parents a level of comfort and security that I think that they still may need at least, you know, here. In terms of the nurses, I mean, the public has been asking and rightfully so, you know, maybe parents are talking about their school, their own school nurse, and not having to rely on a help assistant. And so I think that's something to consider and think about to still maintain a level of safety and security. And even if it's false, sometimes that just helps people feel better about.
And I think that's, that's more than fair, but I'm just thinking in terms of mitigation versus what we have actually found is a good practice. You know, you know what I'm saying? If you can, if you can defend it as a good practice, you can, you can resolve it possible. Unless you're talking about security or something.
Well, and as it relates to the, I mean, we've had zero sniffles. Zero strep throat, I mean, I kind of like
It's been only a year infection?
Not, it's not good.
The learning process. Better because we lived through this and
Can I be the cause of the room? As it relates to anything on right now, like this moment, like this, this one, that's good, speak up Susan, here you go.
So one of, one of the things that we talked about.
So the microphone can pick you up.
One of the things that we're really thinking about is do we need to have a hotline team in January through May? And we did at the beginning of the year, as we have staff members who are still becoming ill, and students who are plenty, but maybe that slows down eventually, and we won't need them during the contract, so that we can not need them necessarily as we continue. So we are thinking.
Right, and you may not need the distance of the busing.
Thank you, so Mr. Morosky.
On the buses.
Um, just a reminder for me, the, the criteria for the, the care knowledge are, I know the two, there's like recovery loss, health and safety, so like what we were just talking about, with even regular medicine, et cetera. There is third one.
So it's, um, prevention of virus spread.
Right.
Prevention of learning loss.
Right.
And then like remote learning is, um, you know.
Um, okay, cool. So then the way I understand the process, so you would seek permission, I need, I mean, ideally, I guess you could always ask for so ask for permission, then spend it, and then they reimburse at the end of this.
So we, every Thursday morning, I get on the phone and I tell them what you have to do, and we just talk about how we're doing things. Any ideas off the top of my head? But what we plan to do is for all of us, throw this together collectively, present it to the enroff directly. Um, and get a blessing first, because our needs are a lot different, because we're in an overwhelming and then I have a meeting tomorrow with O D E people. On this right now.
All right, and then you, you addressed something that was in my brain as we were going through the whole thing right there at the end. Because today we invest in some of these really great things right now, but with these dollars, if we find, I can bet they are transformative in some way. Actually, solid focus is. Is there any thinking about what might be able to mitigate that in future aside from cutting somewhere else? Do we have those conversations yet, or it's like in our head?
Um, so you have two choices, cut somewhere else or bring in new money. Um, and so there are theories, I know that some of you don't want to go for new money to the but we have a renewal that's coming up on November twenty two, it's a third renewal, fifty one, and actually a third renewal. And they give a substitute replacement and increase it, so choose. Um, and that kind of depends on, you know, how we want to go from this point.
Another thought on the money piece would be to strengthen the conversations with the city about the money and dollars that they have access. So that might be a way to, you know, cook this, this thing.
And if we can get the state to fix the state formula, the comparison would have brought a sixty million dollar entry too. Probably a lot of stuff. Um, but now with the, the last version of the budget was five million entry there, or something sneezes at, but it doesn't. If they can ever fix the funded formula for growing urban districts that are in academic or going up. Because it's only, only one section of our funding actually moves with the enrollment, and it doesn't move past its expense of, because it did, they'll come to us in pockets of twenty five. So a hundred kids could cost us six or seven, eight teachers instead of just four. Right, and that's why we're, do we have any idea of whether and the timeline of this? Um, I don't have a color, been wanting to hear all day, so all
Because it was on hold, and they didn't make a decision, right?
There's, they have a, a pack, their appropriation package from their budget request too, so trying to figure out.
One other quick thought on the funding is to, um, work with, for example, Children's Hospital on the medical league. So for example, Children's Hospital actually went up to Columbus a lot before the wellness dollars that we actually received. And so say that, you know, nurses, that's something that we need to move forward. Um, to have Children's Hospital go and advocate for that, for that funding could be another way to bring some money in. So I think that there are ways to actually have additional balances.
Do you have a question? I found this to be, Mr. Lindy, go ahead, you can first.
No, I was just going to say, I found this very helpful, very thorough, especially around the and dollar allocation areas, that was very helpful. Go ahead.
Yeah, friends, gentlemen, I think I also wanted to say thank you, Jen, I've, I've happened to see you do a number of budget presentations before on finance last year. I really appreciate the way you said just the whole minute. But here's by your picture, here's the problem you'd be for years from now, why would you do that? Here's how that needs to operate, right, you have this year. I would be lying if I said I followed that perfectly, because there's a couple of times you did it, but here in your own. Um, I think, I had, I had three thoughts on one of the overall presentation. I think for me, that the only, the really important thing is the same to me, even though is some conversation about outcomes for children, like this budget will allow us to reach. Uh, and, and to me, this just matters a lot. I, I'm, I'm very concerned about the math data that we're talking about in the series. Uh, and then if you look at the math data from last winter, about twenty three percent of kids in CPS were on grade level. And that number's going down to seventeen percent this year. Now, now maybe it's the case that most of the kids who are missing were students from home affiliates, but we heard the student achievement committee did a little ticket, so maybe it's higher than that. But even if it's twenty three percent, plus there's one in four kids being on grade level. Uh, and to me, I, I think everybody in the room, like, we all know it doesn't have to be that way. I mean, we have schools in CPS that count, that prove it doesn't have. That has been, they all just like a sugar. You know, of all kinds of teachers that are not open to pointing, that show something very different for children. And so the thing that, um, this budget feels like an opportunity to align our values and say, you know, because we're going to execute this financial plan, we're going to move kids in the district from A to B in terms of the number of kids who are on, on grade line. Uh, and I think it, it tests us to say, like, do we really believe all the dollars we're spending? You know, and it may be like the, the dollars we spend where they're allocated. Exactly the right numbers that are in spot, but like in service of, what are we going to prove that was possible? Um, so that, that I think is my, my first thought. Um, my second one was, I really appreciated the section on the federal funds. Um, particularly the slide, I don't know how the, I don't know what the number is, for the CARES grant, that's why twenty two budget, and it shows what we currently plan for and what's left. Um, for me, as we're thinking through the what's left part of it, I would love to advocate for some kind of high-growth tutoring to be put in place. Um, I think I may have shared an article on this with Ford through Philistine, high-growth tutoring. Um, and I understand that this is, this is some of the best research on what really could come back, learning laws would be. Uh, and it's an idea of seventy five, minimum seventy five minutes per week for kids in one-on-one groups, uh, for small groups, for thirty six weeks. Uh, and, and the thing that I love about that is not just the great data and the impact of it, but if you, if you build it the right way, it doesn't have to create ongoing expenses for us after that money comes in. Uh, because we could hire engineers to work for a financial year. So I wanted to make that pitch for what we do with the hundred million plan, plan yet. And then my third and final piece was, I've been trying to read up on finding of when things depend with the recovery act funds. Um, and I could be wrong about this, but I think my understanding is we have to submit some plan by late August for how we want to spend those funds, and that that will be a little bit different from the usual budget cycle. And I'm just very interested in what, what, what are our plans winds up being? The question was, um, can there be opportunities between now and the middle of that that where we can look at it, see the great ideas you have?
The plan for the, um, the continued presentations, will we find them in every grant that we have state federal, we have to spend a lot of time and improve. And now we're revising that, we do, we have to get a group, so, and which was difficult with CARES, because at first we were like, okay, we're going to spend this money on this. But then things changed, and we wanted to spend money a different way, okay, got to figure out what we need. So every time we get back, it was always on approval and that delays things. Um, it's a challenge, we're hitting veteran responding faster. But yes, absolutely, all the major funds, I have plans to do in the next presentation on like what the major efforts are in that respect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments? We have five minutes. Okay.
Thank you, Jen.
All righty, so, uh, if we don't have anything else, um, undoubtedly recessed. Uh, I need a motion to recess into executive session to consider, um, come on those. Uh, pending litigation, uh, negotiation, and criminal of published employee or official. And I guess, thank you.
Is that roll call?
Yes.
But I'm sorry, just a second, did it?
Roll call, uh, for the
Uh, Ms. Golden, I, Bowers, Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Mastrom?
Yes.
Ms. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, at this point, we'll take a, a few minutes break and come back and go right into the executive session.
Bye bye.
Huh? We're staying in